The Mount I... Oh, councillor Doyle, where is the apology? Yep, okay. Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the Kalkadun and Injolangi people, traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging. We extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. Please note this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meeting policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd like to welcome Pastor Dave Quilty here today from the Isa Community Church to do the prayer.
Thank you, Mayor McCrae, appreciate the invitation. Just before I pray, I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor McCrae and the team, your team for supporting us on our Christmas celebration here on the lawns. And thank you so much for allowing us to use those lawns and for your participation as well. We so appreciate that. We had over 250 people here to celebrate Christmas here on the lawns. And it was just a tremendous experience. So I just want to say thank you as the chairman of the Council of Christian Churches. We just let's say thank you. And just before I pray, I just want to remind us, you know, often when people talk about prayer, we wonder sometimes what is this? And in the old Hebrew writing, pictures were actually used instead of letters and words. And the word for prayer in Hebrew was a picture of a face turned to the side, which means a turning head, and a, an ox. And the word prayer actually means turning to face the one that's able to bear the burden. And that's what an ox does, it bears the burden. So prayer is really about just turning and facing that one who can bear the burden. And I know about you, but there are some burdens I cannot carry. And I know that as I pray and leave that to God's hands, then he's able to more than bear the burden of my life and of the challenges that you and I face in this world. So in that, let's turn and face the one who is able to bear the burden. Father, we thank you this morning that you were more than able to bear the burdens and the challenges of life that we face every day. We thank you for our city, thank you for these beautiful people that call Mount Isa their home and the surrounding region. I pray for our mayor, Mayor McCrae, Lord, that you give her wisdom and her team, the councillors, the deputy mayor, wisdom to lead our city. And Lord, that all they do would be to glorify you and to, Lord, bring the best outcomes for our city, for our people, for the children, and for our region, Lord. So we bless this place, we bless this space today. We pray that you would just oversee this meeting today, be in their words, give them wisdom to know what to say and what to do, so that our city would be a city set apart for the kingdom. Father, we thank you for your blessing upon this city. We thank you for the rain that's about to come. We pray that into this, Lord, a river running, Lord, to fill our dam. Lord, we thank you for that the heavens would open in this place. Lord, we bless this place today. We ask you these things in your mighty and precious name of your son Jesus. Amen and amen. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Pastor Dave. It's always good when you come in and do the prayer for us. I'd like to move a motion that the apology be received from councillor Doyle. Sorry, that it's accepted and leave of absence granted. Do I have a second for the motion?
Seconded, Tully.
Thank you, councillor Tully, all in favour? Carry. Public participation. Kmart have here to accept money for the charity of the month that Mount Isa City Council staff have put together, $220 for the wishing tree appeal. I know the councillors and myself got along before Christmas and donated some gifts to that. And it looks like the team here at council was able to fundraise for some extra money to go to those that are less fortunate. So we have a representative from Kmart here today to come on down and accept this.
Did you want to say a few words as well?
Yes.
How about we come over in the middle?
No pressure.
This is on livestream, remember? Everyone in the room wants to see your beautiful face.
Want to sing a song? Branch you up?
Oh, thank you. There you go. And I think we need to go.
I'd just like to thank the Mount Isa Council for this donation. And we were able to help over 250 families in our region. Thank you.
Thanks, that's a huge contribution. I'm sure the community really appreciates that.
Do I have a mover for 5.1 minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 18th of December 2024?
Move Deputy Mayor Coghlan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Seconded, Tully.
Tully, all in favour? Carry. Item 6.1, outstanding actions from previous council meeting as at the 23rd of January 2025. Do I have a mover?
Yeah, I'll just move that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from the previous council meeting as of the 23rd of January 2025.
Thank you, councillor Crowther, do I have a second?
Seconded, Deputy Mayor Coghlan.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan, all in favour? Carry. Do we have any declarations of conflict of interest? Neil? Okay, we'll move on to the merrill minute for January. I can't believe it's January, a whole new year. I'd like to start by congratulating all of our Australia Day Award winners in welcoming our new citizens. All the award winners were very well received by the community. Our citizen of the year was Sue Wicks, our junior citizen. Ashley DeValle, senior citizen. Keith Ballard, senior sports person of the year, Sunny Retava. And Alan Hazel, junior sports person, Jean Lavelle and Yasmin Wildhill. And the community event of the year, Great Northern Rodeo Series Arts and Cultural Award, Shirley McGregor. And we had a number of Spirit of Mount Isa rewards. And all these people contribute greatly to our community, so thank you to all of them. John Davies, Kate Fisher, Lee Alice, Phoebe Ryder, Zara Kuskov, Jay Morris and Dave Bartolo. And on that day, we also had 20 new citizens, over 20 new citizens, sorry. A big thank you to Penny and councillor Coghlan for taking an active part in organising that event. It was very successful and we've received great feedback. It's these events that bring unity and community spirit to our town. Over the, our next event is this weekend with the Super Sign on Expo. And the weekend after that, we have our Welcome to Mount Isa event. We also have the launch of our Future Economy Roadmap coming up on the 21st of February. So most of the executive officers have been extremely busy finalising that document and getting these events prepared. I'd like to farewell our director of corporate services, Chalaya, who's been with us for over three years. I'd like to wish her and her family all the best for the future and wherever they end up going. And I'd like to thank Chalaya for the work she's done at council to this time. So thank you very much, director. We'll be moving into confidential early in the agenda today to discuss the rodeo creditors' meeting that's happening today at 11:00. Many of you would have seen the creditors' report. I hope today's season enters this saga as there are no winners here other than out of town company that has used this misfortune of others to help themselves. I've read the report thoroughly and many accounts of events are different to my own. However, I'll let it go, as the more this is talked about, the more reputational damage occurs to our beloved event. I feel bad for the state government who tried to do the right thing by our town in our hour of need. Our council who got involved to help creditors, even though it was not our responsibility. And we in fact ourselves were a creditor. The creditors, our event in our town that has received much unwanted negative publicity in order to detract attention from the real story, the money being accrued daily by the administrators. The breakdown on page 25 of the creditors' report outlines that the administrator, his legal and consultants, will take approximately $728,000 of the funding provided, which is disappointing for creditors to say the least. Let's hope that this is wound up ASAP to limit any further charges. To finish off, I'd like to thank the wellness committee for putting on that whole of staff breakfast this morning. And it was really well received by staff. And I think it's great for staff's mental health to get around and chat with other people in the organisation and have some good social bonding while they're at work. So thank you very much to the wellness committee. Do I have a mover for item 10.1, updated policies for adoption?
Move Deputy Mayor.
Are you going to read the motion?
Yep. That council adopts the following statutory policies, administrative actions complaint policy, audit and risk committee charter, entertainment and hospitality policy, fireworks policy, public interest disclosure policy and standing orders policy.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Crowther, all in favour? Or should I have asked, did anyone want to talk to that before we went any further?
I just would just like to say, I think a lot of these policies have just come up due to dates. There's not much change to them, it's just that they have to be updated formally at a meeting every year or two years.
Thank you, sorry, we'll move that again, all in favour? Carry. Do I have a mover for 10.2, expressions of interest for the sale of council's batch plant?
I'll move that. The recommendation is the council resolved that it is a public interest to invite expressions of interest for the sale of the council's batch plant situated at 183 Duchess Road, Mount Isa, before inviting written tenders as an expression of interest for an informal decision regarding the future sale of this council-owned asset.
End.
And that the council call expressions of interest for the disposal of the land, concrete batch plant and equipment by the following options. Option A, sell the land and batch plant by purchase and operate on current site with all equipment as detailed in this report. Option B, sell of the batch plant by purchase and remove from current site with all equipment as detailed in this report. And the council delegate authority to the CEO to finalise the expressions of interest for the disposal of the ready-mix batch plant.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Crowther, all in favour?
Do you want to speak to it?
Oh, sorry. Does anyone want to speak to it?
I'll just, the council currently owns and operates the concrete batch plant at Duchess Road. And the batch plant itself has two functions, one is to supply ready-mixed concrete and the second is landscaping supplies of soil and gravel with all products being sourced from local suppliers. Both of these functions provide material to external and internal customers. The number of... Do you want me to read all that out, Pete?
No, no, just talk about your perspective and whether you think it's a good idea or not.
I just, yeah, I'd just like to, it's one of those issues that we probably haven't been running successfully for a number of years now. And I think we've just got to throw options out there and come back with some expressions of interest to see if there is money in it as a council, because at the moment we're running at a, you know, at a loss. And it's something that I think we have to look at before it's too late.
Thank you, thanks councillor Tully, councillor Ballard?
I'd just like to say that the batch plant currently represents a significant financial impulse to the ratepayers of Mount Isa. And while I do agree with the batch plant having been established in the first place when there wasn't sufficient private supply to satisfy the local market, I think that circumstances have changed and we as a council probably need to reflect that in our priorities. And I believe that that operation could be better served in the hands of a private operator. And I think it's probably a net positive for us to move in this way.
Anyone else? No? All in favour? Against? Remembering that we're just exploring the option, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to a sale. We'll note that, did you want that noted, councillor Coghlan? Yes?
What did I make against?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I voted against.
Okay. Righto. 10.3, Strategic Fleet Committee, adoption of terms and reference and appointment to committee.
I'd like to move that council approves the terms of reference of the Strategic Fleet Committee as presented and that council appoint councillor Tully and councillor Ballard to the Strategic Fleet Committee.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thanks councillor Crowther. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll just, just to give an overview, once this is established, the committee will be providing recommendations to council on purchase of fleet and will provide oversight of council's fleet operations to ensure value for money objectives are met.
Yes, councillor Ballard?
I'd like to thank the CEO for his support in establishing this committee to provide greater oversight and understanding of the fleet functions within council. I hope that councillor Tully and I are able to provide value to the Strategic Fleet Committee and that our efforts can ensure sound business decisions are made by council in this area.
Thank you, anyone else?
Can I just ask, with the budget and financial oversight, this committee advises on the annual fleet budget, who actually sets the annual fleet budget?
So the committee will make recommendations to council. So the minutes and everything else has to come back to council and council will have to set the budget for the... So they'll make recommendations to council and then council will go through their budgetary process and have the ultimate sort of say, but they're going to provide advice to council on that.
All in favour? Carry. Item 10.4, adoption of the draft Mount Isa Future Ready Economy Roadmap.
Yeah, I'll move that council adopts the draft Mount Isa Future Ready Economy Roadmap and that council delegates authority to the CEO to approve further amendment, amendments.
Seconded, Deputy Mayor Coghlan.
Thank you, would anyone like to speak to that?
I promise I won't speak to everything.
No, no, you're right councillor Ballard, go for it.
I think that this roadmap is an important body of work that should have been undertaken many years ago. But I'd like to commend the previous council for instigating this project. I hope that some of the opportunities in the roadmap can be brought to fruition to help Mount Isa build a more robust and diverse economy in the future.
Yeah, thanks, I think it is a very important step for our council and it'll be a great day, February 21, once it's launched.
Just like to say, I'd like to thank our CEO, Tim, for all the work he's done on this, because I know you have done an extraordinary amount of work. And you present it, I was fortunate enough to meet the premier and the prime minister. And I thought your presentation to both of them was excellent.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. All in favour? Carry. Oh. Councillor Coghlan?
Is this 11.1 or 10.4? This is 10.4.
This is 10.4?
I'm there, baby.
Okay, we're all carried? Excellent. Was it?
11.1.
Yes. I just don't want to get off this and get into that in case I can't get back. Sorry, hold on guys, I just have to find the supplementary report. Okay, I move that council considers confidential report listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254J of the Local Government Regulation 2012. This is item...
15.1.
S.1? 15.1, asset sale agreement, Isa Rodeo Limited. Is there a script for what we're going into?
Yes. So on the supplementary report, there's the reasons why we're going into it.
The grounds on which, of which part of council or committee may be close to the public are listed in section 254J of the Local Government Regulation 2012. E and G, legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against a local government in negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Do I have a second?
Second, Deputy Mayor Coghlan.
All in favour? Carry.
Thanks, councillor Crowther, all in favour?
I'm all in.
Carry.
Okay, we're back on the live stream, meeting's open, off you go.
I like councillor Tully, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest as a result of 15.1 regarding the radio.
And you're going to...
And I'll leave the room.
Do I have a mover for item 15.1, asset sale agreement, Isa Rodeo Limited? Oh, sorry, yeah, we'll wait till he goes in.
I'd like to recommend that council authorise the CEO to sign the asset sale agreement between Isa Rodeo Limited seller and Mount Isa City Council buyer on behalf of council.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
Thanks councillor Crowther, all in favour? Carry. We'll just wait for councillor Tully to come back in. Yep, so we're heading back to corporate services reports now and we'll go to item 11.1, finance overview report, December 2024, do I have a mover for that?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the December 2024 finance overview report as presented.
Thank you, do I have a second for that motion?
Second to Tully.
Thanks councillor Tully, would you like to talk to that councillor Ballard?
We can see in the overview that fees and charges, revenue, interest, grants and subsidy payments have all had a positive impact on our revenue, however, over time and materials and service expenses have had a negative impact and we're sitting at a $5.6 million worse position than we were anticipating, so it's, there's a little bit of work to do to try and tighten up those areas, I think.
Thanks councillor Ballard, any further, anything else?
Yeah, I have some questions, I wasn't at the workshops, I apologise, but on page 87, I guess the director of your corporate, corporate services, that current assets, cash and cash equivalents, is that 50 million, is that what we started with at the beginning of this financial year? So is our projection to be down $9 million for the year and total current assets over the year, is it projected that we're going to lose $31 million? Page 87.
So to answer your question, I'll take you back to page 83, so the cash and cash equivalent position, there is a graph there in the table that shows what the positions were from July 2024, so we started off with $42 million in the bank, so it's actually much less than what our target was, 52, and we're still tracking slightly below that target, so in terms of projections, I'll just skip to the statement of financial position in the budget. Right, so going back to you, page 87, on the statement of financial position, we did a quarter one budget review and the forecast at the end of June 2025 is likely to be around $41 million, that's basically what it says, does that answer your question?
What did you say, 31?
30th June 2025, projected $41 million and this is what the quarter one budget review indicates.
Okay.
Was there anything further? All in favour of accepting the report? Do I have a mover for 11.2, Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Units Finance Overview Report as of 31st of December 2024?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the December 2024 Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Units Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thanks councillor Ballard, do I have a second, Doc?
Second it.
Councillor Crowther? Councillor Ballard?
I'd like to thank the finance team for providing this summary over the business units, it's a concise snapshot that allows us to see where we're tracking well and where we need to do better, we can see the impact that timing of payments has on our actual revenue versus budget, there's concerns around fleet and workshop, given they're almost exhausted their yearly budget in the first six months of the year and obviously this is an area that needs improvement.
Thank you, anyone else?
I'd like to just give a shout out to the civic centre staff, I know the civic centre's performing very, very well at the moment and they're well above their budget at the moment and also Splashes doing a great job there, you know, I know it's been very hot and we've definitely got the place for people to go, but the staff there have been going above and beyond and I think Australia Day was a big show of that, I think they had nearly 700 people through the gates, which was great, it was a free event, so, but it's still, I mean, the standard there is very, very high and yeah, so just congratulations to both those workers within council.
Thanks deputy mayor, all in favour? Carry. Do I have a mover for 11.3, Myco Finance Overview Report, November 2024?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the November 2024 Myco Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second, Doc?
I'll second that.
Councillor Crowther, would anyone like to speak to that?
Obviously the comments for this overview are much the same as they will be for the next agenda autumn being for December, but we can see that Myco is tracking quite well compared to last year, that is due largely to the city council whiting off some of those insurance expenses and that sort of thing, but those ongoing expenses and the income, I guess both of those units are tracking in the direction that we want them to, so I'd like to commend the new board, or relatively new board I suppose, and management for their efforts and I hope that they, that they continue to perform that way.
Thanks councillor Ballard, councillor Crowther?
Yeah, I just want to reintegrate what the decisions obviously the board's been making, but then obviously passing down through to the management and to the staff, they've been working hard in the cafe, they've sort of been getting some good contracts with that, which is good to see, they've made some sort of tougher decisions with not replacing staff, so... They've been working hard in the cafe, they've sort of been getting some good contracts with that, which is good to see, they've made some sort of tougher decisions with not replacing staff, so they can get those employment costs down, so there was obviously with our vision, they're sort of there pushing forward and trying to get through and starting to work with them, and I think they're appreciating the amount of work that we're putting into them. So they're sort of, we're seeing that result come back as well, but they, they, the whole team seems to be sort of pulling in the straps and sort of doing as much as they can, especially on the downturn of the sort of tourism season, they're still seeing some good numbers come through in the sort of our hard times mind, so it's really good to see, and they've sort of got some good plans coming forward with them.
Yep, thanks councillor Crowther, anyone else? All in favour? Carry. Do I have a mover for eleven point four, Myco Finance Overview Report, December twenty twenty four?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the December twenty twenty four Myco Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, do I have a second, doc?
I'll second it again.
Councillor Crowther? Anyone wanting to speak similar to the last report? Ditto.
Yeah, pretty much the same, sort of, you can see it's trending still the same, which is good to see.
Yep, the trend is your friend in this case, this is what we like, all in favour? Carry. Do I have a mover for eleven point five, asset management plans for adoption?
Mayor, the council ballot's got a procedure.
Oh, sorry.
I did want to move that we lay this one on the table for a month's time to give us a little more opportunity to go through those plans, I think they're pretty significant documents, and I'd like to be well and truly across them by the time I, I vote on them.
Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Coghlan, councillor James Coghlan, all in favour? Okay, that's carried. Item eleven point six, Workforce Management Transformation Action Plan?
I'd like to recommend that council adopts the draft Mount Isa City Council Workforce Management Transformation Action Plan as presented.
Thanks councillor Ballard, do I have a second, doc?
Second to Tully.
Thanks councillor Tully, would anyone like to speak to this one?
I'd just like to say that this also represents an important body of work, Mount Isa City Council wants to see ourselves as an employer of choice and you know, attract that high quality talent and not only attract them but retain them, so it's important for all of us that we look to do better in that area, and I think this plan marks a significant step in the right direction.
Yeah, I had a look through it and I think that's a really comprehensive plan, it's great that we've identified, you know, some of the things that are sho, are shortfallings in the past and we look forward to having a much more stable workforce moving forward, so thank you to the people for putting, for the team for putting this together. All in favour? Carry. Item twelve, community services reports, twelve point one, regulatory, regulatory services report, July to December twenty twenty four, do I have a mover?
I recommend that council receives and accepts the regulatory services report as presented.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, do I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
Thanks councillor Crowther, did you have any commentary councillor Coghlan?
No, I just, just wanted to ask the director of. The director of community service, I think this is your portfolio, yeah. Feral cats, are we saying that we, we caught fifty two feral cats this financial year? So in six months, we caught fifty two feral cats, is what those figures are telling us. On page.
Two eighty six.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's correct councillor, so the updated format of these reports is intended to provide you with some useful data as well as some analysis of the insights, we haven't previously reported that particular detail to council, but that is correct, that is the figure for the, for this period.
Is there, is there anything done with state and federal government, is there any, any programs in place for feral cats because obviously we can trap as many as we want and they're going to come, borders mean nothing, so is there anything in place federally that we can, we can lever up?
It's, it's an excellent question, biosecurity is an important part of how we operate as a council, whilst we're a remote city, we still have rural issues. My team moving forward is working closer with Southern Gulf and our neighbouring councils to target some state and federal funding. A lot of the funding rounds that are coming through now align with our regional biosecurity strategy and that wants to see us working as a region rather than as isolated groups, so there is a trend moving up in terms of the number of feral cats in the city. That's why we've established the Rural Landholder Working Group, among other things, and it is a space where we're going to start to chase more aggressively some state and federal money.
Thanks, our director of.
Community services.
Community services.
Okay, all in favour? Carry. Do I have a mover for twelve point two, library services report, July to December twenty twenty four?
Yeah, I'll move that council receives and accepts the library services report for July to December two thousand and twenty four as presented.
Do I have a second, doc?
Second to Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully and councillor Coghlan.
I just would like to say for the first half of the two thousand and twenty four to twenty five financial year, we saw a total of thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety nine visitors, in addition to engaging new members, visitors and community through events in Mount Isa and Camberwell, community members can also utilise the library computers, wifi, physical and digital libraries while enjoying some time out of the heat. The library again are going, another part of our council that go above and beyond and do a wonderful job over there as one can see by the amount of people that visit the library, and I think they're only going to get busier coming into the tourist season because I know a lot of tourists go in there as well.
Do you know, I just echo councillor Coghlan's words there, I, I spent some time down in Brisbane at the State Library doing some study in that, and the number of people who visit that library, and it's not books anymore, like it's, there's books there but it's everything around it, the number of families that, that go to libraries now for what they provide is, is amazing, and I think the more we can get the word out to what that library does, it'll be even more well utilised, so yeah, they're doing a great job.
And even if we could attract the funding for the upgrade to the master plan that we've got, that would even be better again. Okay, all in favour? Carry. Item twelve point three, development and land use quarter two, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five overview report.
Yeah, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the development and land use quarter two, two thousand, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five overview report as presented.
Thank you, do I have a second, doc?
Second it.
Thank you councillor Crowther, councillor Coghlan, did you have anything for that one?
Development, John?
Oh, sorry councillor Tully.
No, you're right, development.
We have a spill.
Hundred percent we're looking for, definitely, more and more of it. Twelve four please, mate.
Who's planning, that's you isn't it councillor Tully?
Or me, is it?
I, do we vote on it?
Did you want to vote on that twelve three?
Yeah, we didn't.
We can vote on it.
Oh, sorry, where are we up to, twelve three?
Twelve three, twelve four next.
Yeah, okay, all in favour? Sorry, I was waiting for someone to talk to it. Twelve point four, out of round sponsorship application, oh, I need to declare conflict of interest for this. Declarable, and I'll leave the room.
You'd love it.
Close that door. As councillor, mayor McCrae's out, I got a mover for twelve point four?
Yeah, I'll move that, I'll move that council approves sponsorship to Zonta Mount Isa and the amount of five thousand dollars for their twenty twenty five International Women's Day event to be held on March, in March twenty twenty five, subject to the following conditions. Provision of, one, provision of latest ordered financials, two, provision of organisations incorporation certificate, three, provision of the organisation's public liability certificate of currency, twenty million in value is compulsory, four, site plan setting out the existing infrastructure and potential location of the event's components, five, permits, the land owner permission, E G venue hire permission, fireworks permits, et cetera, six, provision of sponsorship perspective, and seven, on the post events, completion and submission of council sponsorship programme acquittal report.
Have I got a second for that motion?
Second to Tully.
Oh dear, anyone like to speak on it?
I'll just, Zonta of Mount Isa have requested sponsorship from the Mount Isa City Council outside of the scheduled rounds in February and August due to the timing of the event. They are unable to make an application in the next round set to launch in February as the event will be considered retrospective.
Anything, anything else?
Didn't, I thought last time this happened, we said that that would be the last time that we'd accept something out of, out of rounds. Was that?
I don't think we sort of were going to reject anything out of our hands, but it was more that we're trying to encourage everyone to get them into the rounds, and I suppose that I think when we're pushing for a lot of these to get them into, into the normal rounds, there's going to be some leeway, we're going to have to, I mean, that sort of, we make the decision now, it's still going to be sort of thing, but I think pushing towards the future is trying to get them in the rounds, but yeah.
So why, why do we have rounds? Why couldn't we say you need to apply three months before your event or six months before your event, like?
I think it goes to budgetary constraints and.
It's still within the same financial year.
Yeah, but there's only a certain amount of money put away for sponsorship rounds.
Yep.
Could hand over to community, director of community services.
Thank you deputy mayor, the policy that we've got in place provides for the rounds. When we receive an out of rounds request, we present to council of consideration. If council wanted to explore change in that policy, we could bring that to a future meeting.
So when, when is the event, why will it be retrospective?
Because the event's in March.
Okay.
So, yeah, the round only opens in February, so I don't think it closes till sort of either late February or early March.
I'm pretty sure the event is very early March.
Okay, and the other round ends in?
August.
In August? So they have this event every year?
I just find thi, this does happen, it has happened over many years, a lot of the organisations in, it would be in a perfect world that everyone put in their out of, their rounds, oh, sorry, every organisation would put in for our sponsorship rounds, but as we know, all these groups are led by people that have got jobs, they're busy and things do get overlooked, so it's completely up to council when it does come as an out of rounds to say yes or no, so but it, it's not something that happens often, it does happen, but it's not something that happens very often.
Director of communities, is there anything in the policy about multi-year?
So the policy doesn't directly deal with multi-year agreements. Council has previously entered into multi-year agreements, you'd remember the discussion around the show sponsorship. It is an opportunity for council to get on that path, if you want to.
I just, these, there are, I would think that there would be certain events that are annually presented for this, like this, and I would think there's on, and I'm in, I'm for this, but it's an annual thing to say every time it comes through here, like we maybe look at exploring something along those lines.
Administration are happy to have a chat with those groups that are annually applying and receiving grants and explore options for multi-year.
Thanks, thanks director of community.
We'll get there soon.
All those in favour? Rightio, now we will move on to, we might have to invite the mayor back in.
Are you sure you want to?
She said might.
I tried but they wouldn't let me. I now have to hand back over to the mayor, I'm sorry.
Pragmatically.
Could have gone on lunch. Okay, item twelve point five, Radif Round two, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, do I have a mover?
I'll move that council endorses the Radif Committee recommendation to decline the application from the Malkari Cultural Connections Limited for their project Sunday and is invited to perform twenty twenty five Australia Day celebrations in Sydney.
Thank you councillor Crowther, do I have a second, doc?
Second deputy mayor Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, did anyone, did you want to speak to that Travis or you just happened to?
Just quickly, the, the committee was under the, sort of the, going through the guidelines of the funding application that was there and sort of just didn't meet the guidelines sort of to what the Radif fundings was available for it, so they just decided to decline it.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I'd just like to ask, when is the next, like, is Radif open all the time?
Now, there's four rounds of Radif, so then, yeah, like they announce them sort of, and we sort of, when they're out next, I'm not exactly sure when the next round starts.
Would we be able to do a, a lot more media and publicity on this because I think there's a lot of people out there that don't actually know that the Radif funding is available.
I think it's, it's gone through the paper, it's gone through Facebook, it's gone through the council website, I, I mean, other than sort of TV advertising, I don't know much, which much we could do, but.
I don't know, I just think we need to look at how we present it to the members of the public, I don't think the members of the public are fully aware of what they can apply for. I think we have to be a little bit more specific for that, if we could, you know, they look at it and, and, and they're not quite sure, and if someone's not quite sure of something, they don't apply for it, so I think we need to break it down and maybe use examples of what people have done with it and go from there, it was the same as when we had the environmental grant first come out. We had hardly any pickup to start with and we really did a lot of work on the next time we, we went for it and on what people could use it for.
Maybe just direct letters to company, like to Art and.
We could get one of those chicken outfits and get the bear to sort of wave it in.
That would be good.
You'd love that. But yeah, we're sort of through your recommendation, yeah.
Doing all that, but I just think we need to break down what people can apply for it for, because I don't think people understand.
Maybe we could do something through the paper, as a, as a story.
Applied before because I haven't, I haven't been.
Maybe it's something we could even approach the paper and have a, like a press release about it and see if they can pick that up and, and get actually more than just an ad in the paper or something like that, so maybe we can work down those lines.
I was happy to work with you on that one.
Have you got a list of the people that sort of do apply on a regular basis?
Not in my sort of quick term of being on the chair of it, but obviously there's, there've been always different people applying, but it seems the people that know about it, they will apply, they sort of, they've got a bit of an inclination with it.
And council can use it for our own purposes as well, so we've used it for the skins on the bins and things like that. And also I think in the past Radif funding has been used for some of the murals around town.
Yeah, like that one, I think the one that got approved at the Splashes, I think that was a Radif funded.
Because the reason I asked that question is what obviously the people who are returning every time for, for funding, they know about what there is, just we've got to attack the people who don't know what they're doing.
I think in the past under, like I've seen people fly in to run courses and things like that, but they actually, you know, then charge participants. So, I mean, sometimes that's a bit questionable too, should we be, you know, providing funding for private businesses to come here and conduct, conduct their business, I mean, on one hand it gives people an opportunity, they wouldn't normally have to learn something, so I think that has to be weighed up carefully, but those projects where council uses them towards beautifying the city, I think, you know, they're very well appreciated by everyone because you know, there's always bits of the town that could do with improvement.
Because we do have, like, there's a lot of community groups and sporting organisations that have buildings and that, and maybe they don't know that they could apply to uplift their building with a mural of what, you know, what it's all about, which would be good.
And I think there was talk about those guys that did all the murals last time, they're looking about coming back to try and do some more murals as well, so.
And actually conduct a workshop on training local people how to do the murals as well.
So that could be even some sort of idea of the funding use and that.
Yep.
Rightio, thank you for that.
Can I just ask the CEO, because you're the smart one in the room, if we've got a committee that makes these decisions, why does it come to us to make a decision?
Oh, it's just the disbursement of funds really, so they, they, I think their obligation is that. Refer it back to council and just make a recommendation and then council just endorse it.
So with our recommendation, wouldn't it, shouldn't it read, we just endorsed the R D F, committee's recommend? So with our recommendation, wouldn't it, shouldn't it read, we just endorsed the R D, uh, R A D F Committee's recommendations?
Well, the, the R A D F is a, it's a government funded program, so there's guidelines that because every council I've ever worked on the R A D F committee has to report to council, so it would be in there.
So we've got to list each thing that's, okay.
Okay, all in favour of receiving the report? Carrie. Item twelve point six Environmental Grant Program, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, round one.
This environmental.
Environment.
This is James.
Yep. Um. I move that council approves the following. Council approves the environmental charge project for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five financial year and the budget of fifty thousand dollars to undertake the project. The applicants receive the items specified in their applications to the dollar values listed in the table below. Don't want me to go through every?
Yep.
Figure, okay.
Go on, mate.
No, we don't need to.
Happy Valley Community Kindergarten, thirteen hundred and ninety dollars. Good Shepherd Catholic College, two thousand three hundred and forty five. Newick's Nukathadi Children and Family Centre, three thousand one hundred and five. Mount Isa School of the Air, two thousand nine hundred and eighty. Sunset State School, two thousand nine hundred and forty. Happy Valley State School, five thousand dollars. And Barclay Highway State School Parents and Citizens Association, four thousand dollars and sixty five. Uh, total of twenty one thousand eight hundred and twenty five, which leaves just under thirty thousand in the pot, uh, in the pot, I believe.
Thank you, Dewey, that was the moving, wasn't it? We need to get a second, doll?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thanks councillor Tully, did you want to speak to it councillor Coglan?
Yeah, I think the, um, the, the program last year showed was really successful. Um, and the kids having visited the schools, the kids get really involved in this, um, environmental stuff. Um, so, uh, I think it's money well spent, but just looking at all the people who apply, um, perhaps it's, it's worth talking to the education department to see if there's anything within their curriculum that money could go towards, um, to, uh, to help, um, with, with this, so I think that's something we explore, because it's always the skills that are applying. Um, and I know within their curriculums, they have certain environmental things that they look at, so, um, just something to explore.
Thank you, all in favour?
Can I just ask before we go on? Um, I know the schools were, and I have brought it up before, the schools were presented as part of our recycling program with the yellow bins that you drop your cans and your containers into, is, are they available for other organisations to purchase from Mount Isa City Council?
Thank you Director of Community Services.
Would there be a reason for that though, Cocko? Wouldn't it be an education, a youth education system?
It would just be good to be able to purchase, like, I know there would be some organisations around town that would like to purchase them for their, for their, um, like down at sporting ovals instead of having a bin, because they're prop- they're proper recycling bins, they stand out, the kids, because they're educated, they know what goes into it. Um, rather than have a normal bin that you might just have cans on or whatever, people don't, people don't associate it, that's all.
We'll just go to the director for some advice there.
Uh, thank you Madam Mayor, so the short answer to the Deputy Mayor's question is yes. Um, the more detailed answer is we're currently chasing some funding uh, as part of the implementation of curbside recycling to standardise all the bins so that we don't have different colours out there, and people then understand the behaviour around this goes in the yellow bin. Um, my empty drink container goes in the lime green container. Uh, if we're successful in that, we'll then be pushing out, um, through to the community groups, opportunities to get those bins either uh, at a discount or, um, for free.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oh, sorry, councillor.
So I just wanted to check, so out of that fifty, we've used twenty one, so that like, um, councillor Coglan mentioned, it's just under thirty thousand available. So is it available for, still to, for people to apply now, and like, so, again, like, um, Deputy Mayor Coglan just said, like, they can use those examples of what people have applied for funding to like those other schools or other organisations that look at the.
I assume that would be carried over to the next round, is that right? Yes, I'm getting a nod from the director, so that'll get carried over.
Could that be used, um, Peter, to use around town, like, there's no, there's no, um, recycling bins around ti- t- around the city? Have you, or, or am I, am I wrong, or what, I just haven't seen anything?
In the parks and all that.
No, I'm not talking about around the city here.
Just in the CBD.
In the CBD.
Hmm, that would be a bit hard to monitor, because all our bins are in those silver structures to stop them getting knocked over and tipped out or lit up, I guess.
But I mean, if we're going to recycle externally, why, you know?
It would be something that we could look at because, um, but it'd have to be, I, I think we'd have to take it on advisement and look at it later. With the bins, like they have at the parks and that, you have your red bin and then you have your yellow bin right beside each other.
Well, we've just got none in town here, like, the city, we're doing it everywhere else, but there's none in the city, like, you know, there's just.
Something that, yeah, will need to.
Well, and the reason I said that, because if we've got money that. Oh, okay, you can't, okay, well, that's what the question was.
The grant's for community use.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, all in favour? Carrie. We're moving on to Infrastructure Services Reports, item thirteen point one Major Projects Overview Report, December twenty twenty four. Do I have a mover?
Recommend that, that the council receives and notes to December two thousand and twenty four, major projects overview report. Big move, please.
Thank you, do I have a second, doll?
Ballard.
Thanks councillor Ballard. Um, did you want to speak to that councillor Tully?
Um, no, I think if we're just, um, still tracking along with being opened, I think it's, um, the, uh, I think, um, the, the program's been started out there, um, they're educating people how to use it, and I don't think we're too far from being opened.
Okay, all in favour? Carrie. Um, item thirteen point two Liquid Waste Fees and Charges, do I have a mover?
Yeah.
Thirteen point two, three twenty eight.
The recommendation of disposal fees for liquid waste, septic tanks, to twenty four li- center per litre, twenty, twenty four cents per litre, that should be.
Yeah, that's.
Um, with a minimum charge of fifty bucks.
Thank you, do I have a second for that?
Second it.
Thanks councillor Tully and councillor Crowther. Um, did you need to talk to that councillor Tully?
No, I'm all good, thank you.
All in favour? Carrie. Okay, general business, I might just go around now and see, um, what everyone's been up to. Thanks councillor Ballard.
Thank you. I think we all understand that twenty twenty five is going to be a challenging year for council and for our community. Uh, Ben Franklin famously said that out of adversity comes opportunity, and I absolutely believe that that's the case for Mount Isa. There's going to be plenty of pain felt in our town this year, but if we focus on leveraging our strengths and we prosecute our case well, we can emerge from these challenges a stronger and more resilient community. I'd like to thank Chalaya, our outgoing director of corporate services, for her patience with myself and for other new councillors, as she guided us through the budget process and work to improve our financial literacy. And wish her all the best in her next professional endeavours. I'd also like to congratulate all of our Australia Day award recipients and welcome our new citizens. Mount Isa's strength has often come from the diversity of our community, and I'm proud to say that that legacy is still alive and well in our town. And lastly, I would like to say that with nearly nine months in council, I'm confident that our councillors will hit the ground running this year. It's been a steep learning curve for me, and I hope that with the benefit of time, I will make a more valuable contribution to this council and become a more, and become more effective in my role. So it's, hopefully we can take the training wheels off at some point and we can begin to move the needle.
Thanks councillor Ballard, councillor Crowther?
Uh, I, as councillor Ballard just mentioned, the, the, um, award recipients, it was great to see all the applications come in, as well as then the awards being awarded. And the new, um, citizens, I, yeah, the pride, and they, um, taking, getting that citizenship is, is quite outstanding, they sort of really, really do appreciate getting ma- made citizens and then being able to get the rights of an Australian citizen, so it's really great to see. Uh, congratulations to all the kids starting back, first, the first day of school, especially all the preppies, I've seen all the photos. It's quite exciting, you know, to sort of see them all, sort of few tears there and a few bits of joy, but then I think the joy of the parents in putting all the kids back in the school and getting over their school holidays, I, um, trust everyone had a good school, like, you know, Christmas, New Year break, and as, um, mentioned, looking forward to twenty five and sort of seeing the, the changes that we can make and sort of really, um, with the, um, challenges ahead of us, so it's sort of really get in there and sort of make some differences, so I'm looking forward to twenty twenty five.
And thanks to all the teachers as well.
Yeah.
Um, councillor Tully?
Yeah, just, um, same as what, um, councillor Travis and Dan said, so, um, just want to do, hopefully this year we get the wheels rolling a bit quicker and trying to get, um, results happening a bit, bit further with, you know, twelve months into it, and hopefully, um, um, we can, you know, got a, got a new, got some new, um, staff that have come on board, and hopefully we'll, um, head in the, um, in, in the right direction and get some good results by twenty six.
Thanks councillor Tully, councillor James Coglan?
Yeah, I just, um, first of all, wanted to thank Chalaya for, her efforts here at the, um, at the council over the years. Um, yeah, she's been a great help to, uh, some of us new councillors in understanding the figures and so forth. It'll be a shame to lose her and her family. Um, her son is a brilliant little, uh, drummer, and I, he's got the dreadlocks now, hasn't he? So I look forward to seeing him in a, uh, in a band in the future, because he is, um, he is a very, very talented young man and a lovely young man as well, so I should credit to you and your family. Um, I had, I was in Brisbane for several weeks. Um, I managed to visit Rockhampton and Redlands and was able to ask questions of, of people down there regarding their council, so, um, in a lot of areas, we're doing pretty well, pretty good, in other areas, we're not. Um, so I look forward to bringing that back here. Um, I couldn't wait to get out of Brisbane. Timmy would have been proud of me, there was lots of advice, I was giving lots of advice to motorists in Brisbane about, uh, where they should go and park their vehicles and so forth, um, why I would ever want to move back there, no chance. Um, last thing is the fifteenth of February, Alan Hazel, who was our sports, senior sports star, one of the winners. Um, Alan defends his world title over in Townsville on the fifteenth of February. So it's Valentine's Day on the fourteenth, I can think of no better present for the wife to take him over to Townsville for the weekend, they can have a shop, and then they can go and support Alan um, on the, uh, night to, uh, to bring back the belt, so good luck to him.
Thanks councillor Coglan, um, councillor Kim Coglan.
Um, just like to remind everyone with the Super Sports Expo on Saturday, starts at nine o'clock at the Mount Isa Mines Entertainment Centre, which is located at Buchanan Park, goes from nine o'clock to twelve o'clock, we have plenty of food and drinks available to purchase, because we've got the rodeo Queen Quest entrance, we've got Zonta, and I think we might have a few other uh, local organisations, this is a great chance for new people to, uh, you know, coming to Mount Isa, or someone just may be looking for something different to do because you have all the community groups there. And then also the following week, we have on, I think it's the Friday night, really want to encourage all the new people or any young people in Mount Isa to come along to the, um, Welcome to Mount Isa function that we're having at the Civic Centre. It was a great success last year, even though it absolutely poured rain on the night. But, um, one thing we got from feedback from last year was that we only like in, we thought we'd invite all the new people, but a lot of other people that were living in Mount Isa wanted to know why they couldn't come along, so we have opened it up. It's fifteen dollars, it gets you a drink on arrival, there's grazing platters, and we have entertainment for them, and even though I didn't see it last year, apparently the goldfish races were, um, are, are really hit, so we're having them again, but I would encourage all new newcomers to Mount Isa in all areas to go along and, and have a great time.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, we will move into confidential business items now, I'd like to move that council considers a confidential report.
No, we've done that.
Oh, we haven't got any, we closed the meeting, we've already done it.